We'll have to look at that. I think in the past, believe it or not, they, a lot of this money wasn't even expended on the parks. It was expended on other things.
I see.
So, we're starting to use those monies and allocating them there.
Mm-hmm.
But, that's, you know...
Yeah, we heard, we did hear a lot about parks and playgrounds. That was probably one of the number one concerns that I was hearing from the people. And just curious-
And new schools too.
Oh, well, we, we new schooled it all night last night. But, the fence, where did we build a fence? I'm just curious. We overspent on the fence budget? Not that it was that much to begin with?
Well, top, top maintenance also, so I don't know exactly-
Oh, okay, so it's more than just a fence?
Yeah.
And I know in a few of the parks, sections of chain link that were damaged in order to secure the property. I know, I know, they were replaced.
I mean, there's not a ton of money there. It's, I think-
No, there isn't.
You know, to be, I mean, I don't think we're talking about anything we don't know. There is only a significant, there's only a small amount of monies that we have for each department. And we're sort of trying to balance that, you know, the budget.
Good question.
You know, so I, I think that that's one of the things we are trying to do is a little bit more proactive, but it was clearly not enough in the budget for what we want to do.
Well, I mean, we will address it with the decapal improvement plan, but, you know, people want to see something immediate.
Highway Division. Any questions? Building maintenance and construction? Any questions?
Building maintenance expense, am I jumping along? Am I ahead of you?
Yep, I know, I'm on the same page.
Okay. This is not really a question, Mr. Manager, but I'm, I'm going to assume this-
There's never enough money.
Well, that I think we know, but, you know, relatively significant in our cost of heating, oil, gas. So, I'm going to guess that with the help of this technical grant, we could expect to see a plan and a reduction in that, hopefully?
Hopefully with the money to implement that part of it, yes.
Building maintenance for the town hall.
Town hall.
How did the department put in sixty? And then we're seeing two fifteen?
Looks like they consolidated everything and put it all up online.
So, the way the budget exists right now is we have two sort of line items, a building maintenance for municipal buildings and a building maintenance line item for schools. And so, what I tried to do initially with their request was to, and the finance committee had requested this last year, is to try and establish a budget based on previous actual expenditures rather than- And it does become very confusing having one amount, and then everything runs in a deficit, and you look at the net to see what's available to go towards the schools and the town. So, I think in just going through the next step and us trying to put numbers and recommendations together, that budget wasn't spread out, which I can certainly do. It would stay level funded at the two fifteen level and the two oh five for the schools, but we would just establish a number to sort of go with each building.
Just, just to be noted under here that we are still custodian sure that we did not budget this year. That we're budgeting.
Yes, yes.
And that's a position that was reduced and hasn't been restored as of yet. So, they are doing more with less. It's something that, there's additional monies that, that would be another area that'd be looking to increase.
Building maintenance, one oh three Greenwood Road, what's that?
We acquired that property through a foreclosure proceeding. So, the, we own that house, it's vacant right now, so-
Oh, I know which one you're talking, okay.
Yeah. So, if there's any cost, which there was, we had to go in and do some work with utilities and get rid of the pests and rodents and things.
Potential site for some affordable housing down the road?
Further questions on the building maintenance? How? Anybody have any questions on this budget?
I might have just a couple. On the clinic OT, was, is that like for flu shots and so forth and so on?
Yes.
That's what that is, okay.
That's page forty-eight.
And then, going two below is the salaries total, on line fifty-two ninety-four?
I'm sorry?
Not sure, grehead? I don't know if it's-
Oh, brain, brain head, yeah.
Grehead, okay. And, and so is, that's just for the treatment?
Yes.
And controlling, okay.
Board of Health physician, is that still in Norris Wakeville, this second page two?
I don't know of any change, I think it was-
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ainge?
Madam Chairman, if I could, the, I hope I'm correct on this, Wendy, if you could help me out on this. I believe it's the administrative assistant, or it's the clerical person. One of those two individuals is partially paid out of a grant?
That would be the bookkeeper.
The bookkeeper, okay, thank you. And so, there was some question about having, is that grant still there?
Yes.
And how long is that grant for?
It's the formula grant, it's an annual grant that the center applies for.
Because what I was asked about when we had a visit up to the senior center was, and I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking. By being paid partially with a grant, I guess it affects vacation and retirement and all of the benefits that go with it. So, the question was asked, and again, I don't know if that could all be combined into one salary, and I said that I would ask.
Sure. So, the department head, Madam Chairman, asked for this particular salary to be funded through the town's budget rather than being split. And there was a question of the way that her benefits were calculated, and I think HR took only into consideration what they saw in the budget and the payroll. And so, we had a discussion with them, and we've asked them to go back and recalculate-
Oh, great.
Their accrued time off benefits, that it doesn't matter the source of funding, that determines the percentage that they get, but the complete number of hours that they work in a week.
And I imagine that happens more than we know. So, thank you for addressing it.
Yeah, so that's been addressed.
Thank you.
Further questions on Councilman Ainge? Veterans benefits?
Madam Chairman, the veterans agent assistant, and, you know, I, I look at the veterans agent and I, and I don't see the line item, but then I see the assistant. Where's the veteran agents? Is he under the collaborative?
Yes.
Okay. So, who is his assistant? Is that clerical or?
Yes, we have a clerical position that splits her time between the planning board and the veteran services.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
So, she's not actually getting a decrease in pay, we've just correctly allocated, she works twenty hours for the planning board, sixteen and a half hours for the veteran services. And I think in fiscal fourteen, we sort of just split it in half. So, now we have a correct allocation, twenty hours in planning board, sixteen and a half.
What would the collateral cover?
That would be for the veteran service officer.
Oh, it would?
Not the assistant. And he's never used it since we've been part of the district, but in case he had to go long distance, using his own vehicle.
Are the flags for the graves?
Yes. Uh, no.
That's in a different, right?
No, those flags would be, they asked to have funding to try and replace the flags on all the flagpoles in town twice a year.
That's the thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's the thirty-five hundred dollars.
And, and from what I understand from the, the gentleman who does the flag thing, they're in pretty tough shape, so this will help.
Well, we needed that.
Could I just ask, Wendy, or the town manager, our reimbursement is at seventy-five percent for our veterans assistants? And you can clearly show, or you can clearly see along this line item the increase, so he must be reaching out and reaching far more veterans than we were doing in the past.
Yeah, true, true things that are happening. One is that people are receiving benefits that they're entitled to, that they weren't getting the full amount. And then also, the, just the outreach with the program there, reaching more families and people that are entitled to the benefits that weren't receiving it all. So, that's why there's such a large spike in, I think we've more than doubled-
Yeah.
What we had for, what we had for people that are receiving the benefits. And then now, it is obviously a timing issue, so you don't get the reimbursement for quite a time. Because I think with, even within this annual budget, we're, you know, short, and we're looking at next year, trying to anticipate where it would be.
Just a comment, he's a very impressive young man, and he spoke at the opioid summit on Wittenstein, and just a very, very impressive man.
And Ryan is the district, which I don't know if you've met him before, but he, he's pretty, very squared away, Ryan also.
Is that who spoke, Ryan McClain?
No, actually, and he was just so impressive and so knowledgeable, and you can see why he has a passion for what he does, to reach out and bring these veterans in and the services that they need.
How does the professional services work for them?
I think that would be just a sum of money if they had some agency that they needed to reach out to, to provide them some sort of service. You know, Ryan and Andy pretty much handle everything themselves. But if there were an occasion, then he needed to go out to, to an agency for some sort of service.
Again, just congratulations and thank you for doing what you did when it comes to the library, for them to, after several years, be able to have one hundred percent funding.
Well, it's interesting to me, Paul, obviously Slick and Alan is pretty familiar with it, but they, they right now, the hours, I think what they open at ten o'clock in the morning, which is, I mean, there's a lot of people that want to get to the library-
And they're early, and it's locked.
Before that, and it's, and, you know, my, I mean, just from a personal standpoint, my family's used it, my kids, and now I have another little one that'll start to use it. It's just, there's a lot going on there. I think that this pass board is really, you know, trying to make it more accessible and more demographics of use of the, of the library, which always gets more support.
They're very good at promoting all that they're doing, and they're doing so much more than they've ever done before.
Well, one, one of the things that we did two years ago, when I got appointed as one of the trustees, is we did a people's count. And we also kept track of how much material went out. So, we comped, we, we actually double digit comped year after year after year. And we have waiting lists now for mainly like a lot for the children's programs. So, opening that earlier hours, there's a huge waiting list for that, so that would make a huge impact and guarantee it will fill it up.
Good job, good job.
The children's program has happened longer than this three years, it's been-
Even the teen program?
Yeah.
You know, there's just so much going on.
The director's doing a, a good job over there.
Yes, he is.
And they got a good crew.
It's interesting, just a couple of years ago, we were afraid we were going to close the library, and now it's fully funded, so-
And we lost a good children's librarian until she was very good over there.
Yeah, we did, she was excellent.
But you want to know something? The person who took over, she's good.
Yeah. And then there's an assistant that took over, went from, from, from England or whatever. She's very good.
She, she came in with some new programs in.
She's into archiving and all that.
There's just a different environment now when you go in there. Very positive one.
Further questions on the library? You take that. I have a question on the request for the clerk typist, and you're not recommending that?
Essentially, that was what the request to try to reorganize.
Right, so his request was to have the salary for this position funded through the appropriation rather than the youth and recreation revolving fund?
Okay. So, obviously, having limited resources, one of the things we did, and you'll see in this one, it's, it's a little bit more of a salary increase for the director's position than the three percent. This is another one of those that, because of some of the initiatives that he's dealing with on the drug prevention and these, we've recommended an increase more than three percent in salary.
This is currently funded in the enterprise account?
In the revolving fund, yes. It's not an elimination of a position, no.
Just coming from a different funding source.
Right. He was requesting it be paid, it be funded in the appropriation, and we are recommending, the manager's recommending that it stay within the revolving fund as it is right now.
But the revolving fund is not a funding number, that's a, it's a fluid number depending, correct?
Right, based on his programs and the registration fees and the revenues that we-
Essentially, he's looking to expand to create two, another, create another position that would be a budgeted position. And, you know, we just, we're trying to make the best of what we have based on the resources.
Madam Chairman, if I could-
What, the other?
Ask the manager. I understand we are in a partnership and we have a grant on drug prevention. So, I'm, and I know, and I think we're all very aware of the epidemic and the number of losses regarding heroin and opiate addiction. And you haven't funded, or recommended funding in the next budget on drug prevention. Is there any way that you can look at that again, please? I know that we, again, I know we have the grant, but I think anything that we could do to support the efforts, given what's happening all over the state and in our own community, would benefit, would be a great benefit. So, could you please look at that again? Thank you.
Is this the only, this is, Youth and Rec is probably what, the only one that's still behind from when we made all the major cuts?
No, there's, I mean, the custodian position, the DPW is-
I mean, looking at, just, no, but looking at like the services, like library, so obviously with the rec senior center.
Well, the senior center still is required to have some funding from the grant on the salaries. We have restored their positions to the appropriation in this budget.
And then what would be our biggest benefit by having not, like the, with the clerk's position for itself, having that go through the revolving instead of being funded through here? What's our biggest benefit?
It's not the operations, it's not creating another, a separate position budgeted in operation.
So, could I just follow up on that? If it's not a line item salary, and it's coming out of enterprise, that employee is still eligible for benefits and accrual? So, there is, and, and I just want to make sure, so there is an expense on the town side as well?
That's correct.
Yes, but his revenues are being directly offset for the cost of that salary, whereas if, it's in the appropriation, that revenue is earmarked in the revolving fund. It doesn't go to the bottom line of the general fund to support the salary. So, by it being in the revolving fund, the revenue that he brings in from his programs and activities will support that salary.
For now.
In the revolving fund, right?
For now.
For now.
For now. Now, does that support the benefits? Does she get-
Yeah, so, so-
The enterprise count is supporting the benefits too?
So, so the, the way that department worked before is I don't know if they had, different positions have always been in the revolving fund. I mean, it's sort of, I think it's a model that's used in other communities, you know, so in other words, the user fees is what covers it.
My concern, quite frankly, with this is that, again, we're talking about the grant that the community was fortunate enough to get. And that was a long, long time in the making of really bringing out the awareness and getting people to recognize the problem that we have. And is, by funding it in this fashion versus having it in the operational budget, my concern is what programs we could be risking if- Because again, it's, it's a roll of the dice, you're not going to know from one point to the next, who's enrolled in what programs and what offerings are being made.
Well, we do in some sense, because they have historical and, and sort of, we have to make sure it stays within what's, what's in the revolving, that it's self-sustaining. But in general, with the drug prevention stuff with the director, that, you know, that's, based, I had a meeting this week with the RevMA on the grant that we have for the opiate-
Right.
And basically, you know, thirty percent of his time is what's really needed out of his duties to focus on the grant implementation and whatnot. So, that won't, this, this setup won't have any effect on us delivering those services for youth and rec or drug prevention.
I have a real concern, that's a, that's a gamble.
And I, Madam Chairman, if I just could, I just think we're very fortunate to have the grant, but I think we need to show a commitment.
That's right.
And, and to me, that's funding whatever you think is appropriate for drug prevention. I would hope at a very minimum, you know, they have, you know, I think we funded it, if I'm looking at this correctly. The, we funded it ten thousand dollars, am I reading that correctly? And we are not recommending funding going forward.
Well, the department head did not request any funding as well.
But I do think, given what's happening, we could really look at that, I think it would benefit.
Correct. Any other questions on the-
Thank you.
The tally pot?
Did we eliminate the position of the manager down there?
No, the town meeting had reinstated that, that one of the specials, or it might have been in the annual to bring somebody on for less money, and then we did do that. And someone that's dealing with the bullet passes and whatnot, and like how it's-
So, who actually maintains the restrooms, the trash? Isn't the town picking up the trash and the restrooms?
The restrooms are, are done by the manager.
Okay.
But we did, we did have for a while, we had the custodians going down there to clean up.
Okay, so, could I ask, Mr. Manager, how often is the trash being picked up by the DPW?
Trash is picked up by JRM every, every day.
Every day?
And, and believe it or not, because we had calls and whatnot, I've gone down myself, that is a hot spot, and we're trying to figure out how to deal with it. But it's a hot spot for people coming from all over and sort of unloading the trash, even after-
And do you think more barrels would be?
I think it's going to attract more people using that to get rid of their trash rather than whatever else they would do with it.
Well, you know-
I went through this, and I said, there's no way that JRM is picking it up, and we went down, it was picked up, and I, I went down myself, and then later on in the day, I got a call, went back down there, the place was loaded with trash.
Because I think too, you know, you've got a perfect breeding ground for trash, you've got the water, you've got the trash. It's a perfect breeding ground for lots of activity, but certainly for rodents. And so, what I was looking for here was some sort of maintenance plan. And I know it's been tough, so I wanted to see who's responsible for the trash and for the upkeep and picking up the trash, so-
JRM picks up the trash, the bathrooms and whatnot are maintained by the manager, and then the maintenance is by building maintenance or even DPW when they, they, with the inside-
Do you know how many barrels are down there?
I don't. Do you know? You know?
I just wondered if they were adequate barrels as well.
I would say it's probably minimum of two.
I think there's two. So, we got to figure that out, and just, the concern is if we put five barrels down-
That they'll be five filled, yeah, before you know it, okay.
Is it something that we need to light up more?
Lights, it's just, you know, it's one of these things, I think if we, with the capital improvement, is that, and the police probably won't love the idea. But I think with the technology now, if we had cameras that automatically, you know, were able to feed right into the, into dispatch, then they could sort of monitor those. I know, you know, one of the things that we used to have, and we ran into some problems, I think townwide, is we used to have an auxiliary police that would go out and check all the parks and schools. And something I'm probably going to, you know, sort of try to discuss, but it's, it's a sort of a challenge with the, with the humans and some of the things that went on in the past with the auxiliary. The reason why they were sort of eliminated. But that, that's something that is useful if it's done right, because they're out there, and they're marked crews, and going to all the playgrounds and parks. And that can definitely help with the assistance. But as you know, volunteers and don't go over well with people that have jobs.
Madam Chairman, if I could just ask, Mr. Manager, the refrigeration units for the fishermen that are rented, how are we maintaining them? They've got to be getting old, and it doesn't look like we have a lot appropriated. Does it come from the fees that are paid by the fishermen to rent? What is the status of those?
I think you know a little bit about this, but they, they are, I think, in need of some upgrades. We've had to purchase locks and new cages, I think. But it's something that they're looking at from a policy standpoint of trying to, they had people doubling up and tripling up on lockers. And the new manager is, is trying to work out, and I think I know Wendy's had some numerous conversations in Victoria to try to, try to deal with that.
And the waterways commission, how active are they? When have they last met?
I don't think they've met for a while. I think at one point, they were meeting quite frequently a few years ago, I think when they were looking at dredging and whatnot. But I don't believe they've met in a while.
They can be of help to you if they're active and they're experienced, and they can be of help to the town. But they're not, they've not been active, and so-
They used to be very active a few years ago.
Again, we were looking at a host of different issues, and-
Who's the chairman of that?
I believe when I looked, all of the appointees have expired. So, when we were given our line listing. So, you know, I think probably needs a little bit of attention. Because again, they can be of help to you, and they are very knowledgeable.
I think that's a good appointment. I think there's a good second one to appoint at that one.
I think it is.
Well, we need to get cracking then, because they haven't met and they're all expired.
Right.
And they're, you know, they're going to be playing a role.
You talked about volunteers, I mean, we can get the Boy Scouts to come down every year and spruce up our tally pot, just like, well, they did a little bit more than sprucing up this time, and they, you know, they fixed the lockers and-
And prankers as well, maybe.
I, I think so, because, again, a lot of these volunteer groups, whether they would be Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the environmental organizations, everybody's using prankers class.
All the kids in high school have requirement-
Community service-
Service requirements, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, well, that's why we should probably line item that and deal, work with the school and give them projects.
Good, good.
Fair Housing is pretty, I'm sure.
Now, could I just ask a very quick question on fair housing?
Sure.
Tell me a little bit about that, Mr. Manager. I, I honestly don't know. How is fair housing related to affordable housing?
I think that's a good question.
And, and is some of this helpful to them? Do you know, Wendy?
I don't.
I, so could we maybe explore that? Because I honestly, do you know, does anyone know? I honestly don't.
It's the amount that's been-
So, this, so since the affordable housing group is working hard and has been, maybe, you know. Thank you.
Holidays and celebrations, any questions?
You're going to buy a lot with that dollar.
No, it'd be nice, you know, I hate to, I hate to even bring it up, but it sounds self-serving.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, I hate to bring it up, you know, when they had the Veterans Council, but it would be nice if the town could support the parades a little bit. You know, we, we're out there banging on doors and scrounging all the time for money, and we're doing fundraisers, and, you know, it's a service that we, we enjoy providing to the town. But it would make it a lot easier if we had some, some help. You can do it, you can. If you can't, you can't, but we will not let it die.
Are we in a position yet, Mr. Manager, to do that?
I think we can look at it through the budget. I mean, part of it is, it may not be like a line item financial, but there's quite a bit of expense and overtime and whatnot from people that helped set up and with the parade. So, there is, you know, quite a bit of a commitment from the town, but we can look at this, you know, as, as things progress.
I mean, the community has really come together, I mean-
We have a great, great one coming up on Memorial Day two, which we'll be promoting real soon.
I couldn't believe how much food you had left over, it was phenomenal. Everybody, all, all the different organizations came together to support the veterans, it was wonderful.
They have some acts.
It was different from the hot dog, a couple of years ago.
Oh, it was, it was amazing.
Going off, going off topic again, right, is, um, do you remember how they used to have the portable, um, bleachers down at Stackpole Field?
Yes.
I don't.
Okay, because we did. It would be nice if we had some sort of access to it for this Memorial Day because it's gonna be a big show, right in front of, right in front of this building, there could be a way. We rented them last year for the parade in Lynn, I should find out what they cost because that was a great setup.
We don't have anything, right?
No, we're gonna have, um, someone putting on a pretty good performance this year too. That'd be nice if people.
We actually rented up the desert swamp parade in front of the old school.
Because that's what I was wondering, if there was some still around.
I don't think, I don't think we have a lot of portable, not enough that you would keep them, I think probably looking at the rental of them. I remember they were purchased, but there weren't a lot of them.
Yeah. Now, the one we rented last, uh, in September in Lynn, probably sat two or three hundred people, which would be a perfect idea, so. Even something like that, something small like that would help us out a bit. I want some more rats, Paul, that's all. Uh, we gotta, we gotta raise the folks up, that would be doing.
Yep.
When are you gonna be selling those again?
I'm sorry?
When are you gonna be selling those again?
Well, I guess the guys have already started, so, who, some will be contacting that one.
I'm sure.
Any questions on the retirement of debt?
So just to talk about that a little bit, Madam Chairman, since you see a lot of lines with nothing.
Right.
Um, the debt schedule that sort of follows behind page sixty is the detail that coincides with, um, the general categories that you see on page fifty-nine and sixty. So this was suggested to us, uh, by our consultant and it brings the debt budget in line with the report that we have to file with the Department of Revenue annually, a statement of indebtedness. And so, uh, it will flow easier with munis, it will flow easier when we go to pay the invoices for the debt service, where there's one lump sum in, um, you know, a line item for school buildings or department equipment, rather than trying to find it within this loan name or that bond issue name, um, it just streamlines it more than what it's been in the past. So I give you the general categories of each debt and interest and then I give you the detail that supports everything.
It's really nice, thank you.
Yeah.
It makes it so much easier.
And those that are in orange are, everything's color-coded nowadays, those that are in orange are the exempt, uh, issues, exempt from part two.
Is it any questions on this, please? Retirement contributions?
Mr. Manager, where are we with our unfunded liability or our agreements with our retirees and our retirement board?
Um, they have a, what, a schedule to, uh, twenty twenty-nine, Wendy?
Oh, totally, just a second. Hopefully.
Actually, I think they're doing fairly well.
Yes, twenty twenty-nine, it's expected to be fully funded according to the most recent actuary.
Thank you.
Is the retirement department?
Yeah, they, I think they're bringing on a new assistant, correct?
Yes.
Has that job already been filled, has it been posted?
I think they've already interviewed and, and I, I'm not sure if.
I think I saw it posted, so has.
I'm not sure if they, I, they, they may have filled that this week, I'm not, I'm not positive.
Madam Chairman, if I could, the re- the treasurer retirement stipend for being part of the retirement board, um, on that, was that voted and approved by the retirement board? I remember some discussion around that, that's the only reason I'm asking about whether it was voted and approved and, I mean, I know it's something that I believe you're entitled to, not you, but whoever's in that position is entitled to, and I just remember something about that.
No, I don't think, um, I think this stipend is approved, but I think there was an additional stipend that wasn't, or something, I don't know.
I think it was around last year, I don't remember the issue.
I think the previous finance committee member had raised an issue as to whether or not in the, um, retirement board clerk pulled the paperwork from town meeting and everything had been voted and accepted the way that it should have been.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That was an issue last year.
I remember it, I just don't remember it clearly, so thank you.
Any further questions on the credit? Any questions on the property and liability insurance, you got first?
To you, Madam Chairman, the liability insurance is pretty much cut in half from where fiscal year fourteen budget was, what's the reason for that?
So we sort of had to take a look at the budget and look at the policy and we had to make some reallocation based on the categories that, um, are on the policy and we had to make an allocation for the school's share of all of those policies. It's sort of all blended together in the past, so, um, I took a look at the policy this year and made some calculations based on what is the, for example, workers' compensation is salary-based, what percentage of the payroll is the schools', what percentage is the municipal employees', and arrived at a percentage and made the calculation and we sort of had to reallocate and do some budgetary adjustments. So what you're seeing in the fiscal fifteen request is based on what our actual premium was, not the budgeted amount with a five percent increase.
So following up on that, if I could, Madam Chairman, so you've broken it out school-town and that's why we're seeing some reduced numbers?
Yes, and we've pre- we've put things in a proper category, liability, um, uh, property, general liability.
So it's not like our premiums went down unfortunately, it's just a, a better way of describing.
Right.
The flood insurance, that is for our municipal buildings, correct?
Yes, and I think primarily for the, uh, pumping station down on Lincoln Avenue, which is right along the water.
And do you see that as potentially going up if the floodplain map issue, um, comes back again, um, with the maps as they are right now?
I suppose that's a possibility, um, we've factored in an increase based on what was recommended to us by our, um, insurance broker, if you will, so, um, you know, if, if that changes, that would have to be looked at, if they couldn't cover any additional increase.
And if I could ask, um, Mr. Manager or Wendy, the increase in the unemployment, um, in two thousand and fourteen is two hundred thousand and it's budgeted again in fifteen for two hundred thousand, um, with a recommendation from the manager at a hundred thousand. Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Sure. So I had our HR director take a look at what our liability is, who's receiving unemployment, what their full potential of liability is, and we really don't have.
Difficult to calculate.
We really don't have, um, many employees, the potential is always there, that the, you know, the school may have to make layoffs, um, so that's sort of a, a number that would have to be reviewed, but based on who is collecting unemployment right now and what their liability is, it's, it's not as significant as it's been in the past.
Okay, so that's basically, um, protection, should there be. It's based on who is collecting now and who potentially could.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That is not insurance, that is a self-unappropriate collection.
Yes, they send us a bill.
Right.
The unemployment sends us a bill for the cost that they.
The taxpayer pays for the full amount of the unemployment rate.
Right.
The health insurance, we see that going down and that's because the town manager, you just renegotiated the deal.
That's correct.
The, the contract with Blue Cross, the, um, do you see more or less people going on health insurance now or about the same?
I think people in general, you know, if they employ here, they go on the health insurance, and we do have some, an opt-out program.
Right.
So we do have people that opt out, um, but, I mean, now, we're just meeting now, um, looking at the transition and, um, we've had some meetings about implementing and doing signups and whatnot and educating all the employees on the health insurance.
So you're opening enrollment as well?
It's, we're starting, I think, when do we start, uh, we're gonna, starting early because of, obviously, it's a new company and they have to explain the products, I think we're starting, we already started with a couple of kickoff meetings.
I think they're probably having signups in April, starting in April.
Actually, I think next month, there, there's some sort of a couple, there's a sk- uh, a meeting schedule or whatever that, that's set up for the, from now until then. One of the other interesting things, and I think I sent you in an update, is that, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield is giving a, an award to the, the town.
Right.
Um, for the initiatives, oh, yeah, to, for the, um, I forget what it's called, but, um, with that, I think, believe comes a five thousand dollar grant, so I think, whatever the date is, it's sometime in March, but, um, you know, I think that's positive, we could probably use it for, you know, for some sort of a health, uh, thing. They're much more active, they're setting up walking clubs and pedometers and all that stuff, uh, for people and they, they're really, uh, much more active in trying to, um, set up a, a committee of all the employees, uh, employee committee to do health initiatives to try to keep healthcare costs down, it's a whole different, you know, environment from, than, from the GIC.
What is the, what is the incentive if somebody opts out?
They, I believe it's, um, thirty-six hundred dollars, um, they, they receive thirty-six hundred dollars to opt out into someone else's insurance, but there's some requirements, they have to be on our program for at least two years.
I see. So a new employee who doesn't take insurance doesn't get the extra thirty-six hundred dollars?
That's correct.
I see, thank you.
If I could just ask, the start date for the Blue Cross?
July first.
July first, yeah. And the, it is very aggressive out there and Blue Cross Blue Shield is one of the insurers who is very aggressive in trying to, you know, gank market share, so you are the beneficiary of that, um, and, and it, the five thousand dollars is again, you know, they're very thankful to you, you've, you've set the way, um, and, and they're hoping other communities will do what you did, so, um.
It's, we, we were, um, in a, in a good position because we were the first community to win, but we're also the first municipality to come out of the GIC.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, essentially why we were able to get such a, a good deal and obviously we're gonna see what happens, you know, long-term, but, um, was because Blue Cross Blue Shield did sort of a stop loss, insured the, uh, the Meyer, um, that's offering us the product to attract us to come on board and that was part of the negotiation to sort of make sure that we had some reasonable, uh, expectation for the second year rate, which it's illegal to lock in two years at a row for a rate, but they, the way they did it, they're, they're back, uh, stop loss and insuring in the backend, but it's amazing the amount of managers and mayors that have called that I've spoken to that are, uh, quite interested in trying to.
And I hope it does work out for you and I think it's, it's very common in the market right now, so.
Well, I think the G, if you look at it this way, um, the GIC, I, I, it was supposed to be put there to make it competitive and I would say it's a success because it's made it competitive, um, because now that there's a, and, i- the product that we have, not to go over all the details, but it's, it's sort of exciting in the sense of, um, one of the products we have is an eighty-five fifteen split, um, so it's reduced the percentage, but it also comes with, uh, no deductibles, so you can go to Mashpee, you can go anywhere, um, and, you know, have to hit with any deductibles where the other programs have deductibles and there's also a program, if you go to some of the local hospitals, like Melrose, Wakeville, or Lady, there's no deductibles with the.
A large contract for?
Three years.
Three years.
So now if you get anyone to sign up and join a gym?
Well, for the money, we may put a gym on the third floor, fourth floor, okay, with some yoga, I mean, that's what we're talking about, maybe some yoga classes.
It's a wellness program, it's, it's very common and it's very beneficial.
I mean, there are, uh, with the wellness, I mean, not that you qualify, but there have been times where if you're able to do certain benchmarks with these programs, they've actually reduced some of the community's rates, uh, beyond the pool, if you meet, meet certain benchmarks.
Any questions on property and liability insurance, any questions? Any questions on the transfers? Going into sewer trials? Do you have any questions?
Can I do one quick question on that, yeah, quick, just for money?
Sure.
On, on the INI maintenance plumbing inspector? Home, this is our enterprise.
What, uh, what page?
He, oh, it doesn't have a number.
Doesn't have a.
It's the first page of the sewer.
It's the first one, still in salaries, item fifty-one twenty-six, so INI maintenance plumbing inspector, can you just?
That, that was a, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was a program that, uh, the, the previ- uh, previous plumbing inspector was dealing with, uh, certain INI issues and he was receiving a stipend, um, and that, um, the INI program, um, we, we, we eliminated that, um, with the fee, so that, uh, that, that amount went away with that.
Any further questions?
Just to address the debt again, Madam Chairman, it's been streamlined, much like they've done all parts and you have a supporting schedule for the general categories that follow.
Um, Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Pardon me, there's a substantial increase, Mr. Manager, in both the sewer station maintenance and the sewer system maintenance, you could just talk a little bit about that?
An increase over fourteen's budget?
Or actually thirteen, looking at a hundred and three thousand on the sewer system maintenance in thir- in thirteen, we're up to three hundred and eighty thousand, I mean, I think I understand why, but.
I, I actually think, without looking back at a previous budget, I think those are pretty level-funded line items, I don't think that there's an increase this year in.
Oh, I'm just going across the line items themselves, Wendy, from eleven to twelve.
Right.
And I, and I believe I do understand, I just, you know, wondered if there was something else we needed to know about the sewer system. I know you've been working hard and that, everybody's been working hard, so I just wondered why the, the increase, is it something to be alarmed about, I guess?
No, I think it's been consistent funding level, it's whether or not the previous director or the temporary, um, you know, maybe some of those funds.
Thank you. Thank you.
The water inspectors, questions?
Nice job, Wendy, on this budget.
Yeah, we, we're in the process of, um, water and sewer rate now, analysis as we do every year and, uh, so that, that should be done over the next, uh, probably month. And, uh, you know, that'll, we'll have more information with that, but I think the sewer looks okay and I think we talked about, we don't know right now, but I think water, um, you know, we used some retained earnings last year, now they have a, a water increase, a water rate increase, if I remember.
I, I appreciate the schedules and back of the schedules.
Yeah, you really did a nice job with this.
You're anticipating the questions that we were gonna ask, so, thank you.
Now, the board is required to get their recommendations to fin qual.
Do you want, uh, is, is that information on the salaries?
I believe you did, did you? What is this? What is this?
This is on the, the salary, um, on, on some of the, uh, positions that you guys had asked about.
Okay, so.
Could I ask, um, Mr. Manager, if, was an outside independent agency employed to do this wage salary? Okay.
Yeah, we had HR call, we got some off the MMA.
But it wasn't in.
Did it take place?
What's that?
When did you get this information?
Uh, they just did it the last, uh, I mean, we had some stuff before, but they just put it in that format, um, today, uh, which we just.
Okay, this has been requested for a week and a half and I would think that when you had made your recommendations, this should have actually been able to just be pulled right up and given to the board members at that time, it should have been that evening or the first thing in the morning. I do find it a little bit troubling to be getting the information as we're, we're working on things, that being said, um, again, what time is it, by the way, Mr.?
Ten of nine.
It's ten minutes at nine.
Could we take a five-minute recess?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Would you like?
A five-minute recess just to use the restrooms?
Sure.
Thank you.
We had started the process of going through the budget, um, about a week and a half ago.
We had started the process of going through the budget about a week and a half ago. And this was the follow-up on that. Now, we need to make our recommendations to the finance committee and be obligated by the charter to do this by tomorrow. I have gone through the budget, listened to the town manager and the collector treasurer on their explanations. And I would like to offer what I think would be from the board. I think it would be in the best interest of the town. We have heard statements about unprecedented financial conditions moving the town forward. And I agree, moving the town forward. With that, I'm going to go back to the budgets. And I do have copies of what I'm going to suggest. And I'm going to pass them out to all of you, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Give copies for everybody?
I do, but I had written on, let me get it out. You have enough there?
I have a couple of copies.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody has them. As I went through the budget and after listening to the presentation initially and reading the cover letter that came from the town manager, I'm going to briefly go down and I'm going to make the suggestions to the board that I feel would be appropriate. The first one being under the Board of Selectmen budget. It's under the new item. We did ask that it be termed as a consultative service. However, when you go through the budget, there is consistently the term is being used professional services. So, I think for the consistency purposes, we should change our accounting to professional services. The amount that the board is requesting is $50,000. This is my recommendation, this, as I had said before, was something that had been brought up in the past when reviewing minutes. The next budget that I would like to see an adjustment made to is the town manager's budget. It is for the line of the principal clerk. It is for $46,885 is the recommendation of the town manager. I would like the board to consider the amount of zero. I think that position is, with all that we have gone through in our community, I think to have two secretaries in that one location is probably something that could be better served in a different capacity. So, I, that is my recommendation. Next, if you go into HR, the HR director, the recommendation from the town manager is for $80,486. She was started at $77,250 when Town Meeting had appropriated the $75,000. It went beyond what was the revised budget. And therefore, I think that the salary should stay at the 77,250. Next, if you go into the assessors' budget, what I've done is I have gone down because we were not, we were told about the 3%. The non-bargaining unit employees, I have looked at them and most of them reflect the 3%. I will articulate the ones that do not reflect 3% and explain my suggestion to the board. Again, the assessor, you have him being suggested at the 80,226. 3% of his current salary, 77,000, is 79,310, which is a difference of 916. The assessors' office, under the overtime, the department has requested $2,000. It was in the revised budget of $6,000, and the town manager is recommending $6,000. I think that the assessor's request of $2,000 should be on it, and therefore, you'll have $4,000. Next, on the collector treasurer, the salary that's being recommended for the treasurer-collector budget and cash management coordinator is $91,915. I believe that the current salary of 82,200 should be left at that. When you look back over just the two-year timeframe on the salary increases, I think that they have been significant, and I feel that that position has already received very significant increases. That's a saving of $97,150. Under the legal, under labor relations for the legal, I would ask that's currently being recommended from the town manager at 70,000. I would like to see that drop to 25,000 with a savings of 45,000. And the reason I say that is because all of the contracts, we have been told, and to your credit, Mr. Manager, all of the contracts have been settled. So, I don't, we did ask the question, and I don't feel that the 70,000 is truly reflective of what you mean when you look back at the expenditures in previous years. The economic development coordinator, again, this position was reflected at $80,000 through Town Meeting. The gentleman who holds that position was hired at $90,000. The town manager is now requesting $95,000. I believe that, again, being at 90 versus the 80 that Town Meeting had appropriated, that salary should be left at the $90,000. Moving on to the building department, we have the building inspector, who the town manager is recommending, the 65,392. That number, I believe, if you reflect the 3% increase, should be 64,895 with this difference of $497. Further in the building department, you have the code enforcement officer. The town manager is recommending that this salary be adjusted to 47,460. However, this individual was hired at $45,552, well above what was appropriated by Town Meeting in the revised budget of 39,808. So, I would, that is a savings of $24,160. In the DPW, you have the public works superintendent. Give me while I bring that budget up. The superintendent of public works, the revised budget for 2014 was 95,000. The salary, the hiring salary was $100,000. And the town manager is recommending 104,189. Again, because of the change from what the revised budget was to what the individual was currently being paid, I believe that should be left at 100,000.
What did you, how much on that?
95. DPW general foreman, he is asking for the appropriation of 77,267. He is currently salaried at 74,160. The revised budget was 62,038. So, I think that the salary should stay at the 74,160, which is a savings of 31,07. Under the health department, the health director, the town manager is recommending 64,389. I believe the 3% increase that he has discussed would be the 63,899 with a difference of $490. Council on Aging, the coordinator, town manager's recommendation is 56,217. However, the 3% would be reflected up to 55,790 with the savings of 427. The library director, town manager's recommending 63,264. The 3% against her current salary would put her at 62,783 with the savings of $481. The youth and recreation coordinator, there was a salary increase to $63,000 recommended by the town manager. Again, keeping with the parity that we had been discussed with earlier and the 3%. I have put that at 58,660, which is reflective of 3% against his current salary for a change of 43,40. In the youth and recreation department, the senior clerk typist, the town manager has recommended zero. I think the board should recognize that that is, we're trying to bring this position, this department up, and that that salary should be funded at 41,897, which obviously makes the change of the 41,897. For the programs and activities under youth and rec, the department did not ask for any funding in that line, I don't know why. However, the town manager has recommended that it be for 15,600. I would ask that that be dropped to 14,000 for a difference of $1,600. This total difference in the budget would come down to still having $40,497 in the budget. I have to move the numbers around again to reflect what we need to perform our jobs to have the professional services available to us. It does reflect the 3% raise that the town manager had articulated to us a couple of weeks ago, with the exception of those positions that have already received significant salaries beyond what I believe Town Meeting was led to believe. That is my suggestion to the board. Certainly, I'd like to hear from everybody's thoughts on this. I think it's fair, I know we talked about, I think it's very fair to the folks that are not in the bargaining unit. We felt strongly when we talked about having the ability to have professional services available to us. And that is my recommendation.
The senior clerk typist, I thought that they were being paid out of that endowment account.
It's called an enterprise.
Enterprise, I'm sorry, the enterprise.
Revolving account, yeah.
All right.
That funds, Debbie, that fund is, it's a fluid number. It's a fluid number in that this is not the operating budget. That revolving account can change from year to year. If somebody has, they have programs and a bunch of kids pull out, that's enrollments that they're not going to have. And they're not going to have the fees that go with that. That is what he, I wanted to put this in there regardless, but now that he's saying it's out of a revolving account, I think that that's not, I think this department has to come back up, and I think it belongs in the operating budget.
And another question, with the 3% increase, was, is it okay to take 3% of the total? Or is there a change in the days too? Is a change in the days, so you really just can't take 3% off the total?
Otherwise, it would be decreasing their salary.
You can take the 3%, that they're not union, you're not reaching any type of bargaining agreement.
No, I was just talking about the number of days in the year.
Right, but it's still an increase in the salary. It would still be an increase. You're not decreasing their salary, Scott, it wouldn't be decreasing...
Based on this, it would decrease their current salary because when you budget for this year, you have to budget for 52.3 weeks.
So, you're saying a 3% raise is not going to cover a .3 in the week?
No, in other words...
Are you talking about the ones that were level-funded?
The ones that are level-funded, that's not enough funding to cover their current salary for the entire year.
Okay, then I would take those four positions. And that can have the change made to reflect at a level-funded, then leave it that it would be level-funded. Okay?
Which ones are those again?
It would be the HA, director of HA.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It would be the treasurer-collector. It would be the economic developer, the code enforcement, and the superintendent of public works.
And the deputy assessor.
And the deputy assessor, excuse me, thank you. The deputies...
So, there's six of them.
And those changes would, this is stating is that because they're working a couple of extra days this year, that that would increase, that would change the budget. We have to get this in by tomorrow.
Madam Chairman, if I could, it would take into consideration the director of public health, the coordinator at the council on aging, the library director.
These are the 3%, those people are getting, no, those, they're not going to have any decrease in salary. It's 3% on their current salary.
Right, but your recommendation say, for instance, the library director should reduce it by $481 would cause a deficiency in the line item for the budget.
No, this is, no, because I'm offsetting it by adding it to other places. For the line item, it may, but it's still going to be, so you're saying that these need to be changed to reflect the 53...
52.3.
52.3?
Yes.
Okay, I'm willing to go back and amend that at some point, but I think that the overall proposal, this needs to be put in. So, if we're going to change a few dollars, I can certainly, because that's what it's going to amount to, is a very short amount of money, and we can certainly let the FinCom know that.
So, Madam Chairman, if I could, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're looking to have equality of the raises across the board?
That's correct.
With the exception of those who you identified, who have received substantial adjustments in their salary upward beyond what Town Meeting appropriated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, their salary, their salary is currently higher than what was appropriated by Town Meeting in the revised budget. And/or in the very recent past, they have received significant salary adjustments. I just don't feel that...
Is that clear, Madam Chairman, three?
Does everybody understand exactly?
Now, Wendy, I know you're expressing the concern, and justifiably so, that you want the line items, but I'm understanding correctly that everyone, those who have collectively bargained and those who are not under a collective bargaining agreement, would all receive 3%, whether it be based on 50, with the exceptions of those identified who received substantial increases identified. Am I, that I'm on the correct...
Except for, right, that's correct.
I am correct.
Except for one position you guys are eliminating that Town Meeting appropriated and voted on, correct?
Correct, that would be the principal clerk in the town manager's office. There has, I feel, again, that if we're going to talk parity, if we're going to talk moving the town forward, I think that those, and that's why you did make a recommendation. There is, on the other side, there is a request for a significant increase in salary for your chief administrative aide. When I went through that, knowing that this was going to be a recommendation, you also have temporary help in there. And this all relates back to Mr. Manager to trying to, as you said, move the town forward. We've been in very tenuous positions as far as our financial house is concerned. And to bring on an additional administrative assistant at almost $47,000 when the DPW has not had their positions restored. There are other people down the cemetery track, but you have a lot of restoration that has not taken place. And yet, this position was an additional position after the fact. So, that would be my recommendation, and it's up for discussion and a vote of the board.
Well, I understand, I mean, I guess just for clarification, it wasn't an additional position, this is a replacement of the person.
The replacement that she had was...
That was paid on a 1099, I believe.
Oh, oh, absolutely, she was.
So, it wasn't, it's not a new position.
But it was temporary help.
But it was a very minimal salary that that individual made, very minimal salary without benefits. Am I correct? It was a very minimal salary without benefits that the individual that was working in the front office.
I don't know what it was, I think it was about 30 hours a week.
No, no, because I looked back, no, it wasn't, no. No, no, because I looked back, no, it wasn't, no.
And again, you know, I, I know this is the second time we've talked about this this evening, but I have to take some level of confidence, Mr. Manager, that the budget we're currently operating in is not reflective of the past practices. When town meeting was presented their budget, the line items were where they were supposed to be after significant work. So when we keep referring to paid off of a ten ninety-nine or not paid under a proper line item, that was a budget prior to this budget. This budget, the one you're presenting and the one we're operating on, under, those corrections have been made, correct? Okay, I just, every time you bring it up, I keep thinking, oh my God, I thought this was all corrected, this was all straightened out, and it was.
No, because I think.
By you and your administration.
The reason why I brought that up is because that position didn't show up in the budget. So in other words, the position you're talking about that didn't exist, and that's a new position, that position was not budgeted, there was no line item for that person because they were paid under a ten ninety-nine under expenses.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're telling me as far as how they were paid, I wouldn't be privy to that.
So they wouldn't have had a line item.
But I would be privy to who I saw there and how often I saw that person there, and the line item that said temporary help. That I would be privy to through my budget book and through discussions, and, and so that person did not have that kind of salary that we know now.
That person wasn't paid under temporary help.
I think though, part of the conversation to you, there was discussion on the people who, a couple of years ago, because when you came, as you say, it was unprecedented, a lot of people had to be laid off unfortunately, questions were asked, were they going to be brought back? And I'm not so certain if this is the best way to spend the taxpayers' money is to bring in another forty-seven thousand dollar administrative assistant principal clerk when you have one in there. So I would like to see that brought down to a zero appropriation.
When I was thinking about the budget, Madam Chairman, and looking at the documentation and trying to pull everything together, what I did is I went back to the Powers and Sullivan audits that were done, and I also went into a terrific document that was created when we refinanced our bonds in June that showed our spending trends, and one of the things as this was created for prospective bond buyers, it talked about the town needing to begin stabilization within the operating budget and to make solid budgetary forecasts for three years. It hasn't been three years. And then the next thing I looked at, because we are on the road, but we're not there yet, you've said that yourself, that we still, this will shake itself out. The other thing I went to is, you know, was alarming to see nine percent raises and eleven percent raises and fifteen percent raises. So I went in and I have a chart for all of you, because I really wanted to understand. This is a summary of projected two thousand and fourteen salary increases from the Forbes magazine, but it comes from the U.S. Department of Labor, and this is done every year. And this shows, for all of you, what the percentage of raises are projected to be both in the private and the public sector in two thousand and fourteen. And then going further with that is the fact that the U.S. Compensation Planning Survey Average Pay Raise for two thousand and fourteen is expected to be two point nine percent. Three percent rounding up, and three point three percent to three point five percent would be for executives, middle management, supervisory, and clinical positions. They would stay at three percent, the projections were, and anyone receiving three point three to three point five percent would be oil executives, gas executives, and the luxury sector. So I struggle with anything over three percent, because we are still in an economic recovery as a country, as a state, and as a town, so I cannot support anything beyond three percent. And, and in talking about parity, and I understand, Mr. Manager, what you're trying to do, and I appreciate you pulling together some figures, but I would really want to see a professional wage-salary survey by an outside, independent, objective organization. And I know that the Collins Center does that, I know MMA does that. So I appreciate the hard work, but I expected, based on your transmittal letter, to have something a little more formal.
Again, Madam Chairman, I can appreciate your position on that. You know, when looking at the average increases for this year by your chart, I mean, obviously that, the chart doesn't take into consideration that a lot of these department heads and positions haven't, haven't had any increase at all. This is their second, some of them, it's their second increase in this will be eleven, ten or eleven years. So, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, the board has, you know, make their recommendation and that's, you know, completely fine, and I respect that, you know, your position, but I just hope that, you know, some of these positions like the DPW director and whatnot, when we've brought in people, and I think we've gotten a bargain with the economic development coordinator, and I just hope that we're able to maintain and retain them, that, you know, we've had the VIT director that was here previous left for an additional fifteen thousand dollars to another community, you know, it's just that when you look at the surrounding communities and what their salaries are, it's just, it's such a disparity, it's, that's the challenge.
And Madam Chairman, through you, and I, we had this conversation before at one of our meetings, and I understand you wanting to bring people up to a level that is consistent with other communities, I just don't think we can do it all in one budget cycle, and I applaud you for your efforts, but I think we're still in that recovery stage and that stabilization phase. And I am a strong believer that what town meeting appropriates is what should be spent and nothing more. So when town meeting is given a figure and that person is hired at a higher rate, that is, that is not the process we should follow. It's not the best practice to tell town meeting a salary will be, and I'm just putting a number up there, for instance, the salary will be sixty thousand, and to bring that person in at seventy or seventy-five thousand, it's just not a good practice. So I understand what you're trying to do, I respect it, but I don't think we can have this kind of dramatic increases in one budget cycle, I just don't think it's responsible, especially when there are other departments that, as the chairman said, have not been bought back to full staffing and, and much needed things like, just for example, our conversation about drug prevention. I mean, some of that funding can go, some of this additional funding needs to go to quality life issues.
I have any questions?
So Madam Chairman, you're going to, you're going to recalculate all those?
No, what I'm going to do, I can certainly recalculate them, but I can present this as, even though, because you still have an additional that I did not key into any line item, forty thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. How much we're talking about, Wendy, you need to key these numbers in, send to the FinCom, correct, by tomorrow?
Right.
Okay, um, do you want to make the, or do you want me to make those, or do you want me to send a letter to the FinCom that there needs to be a slight adjustment because of the change in the days?
That'll be easier, that one, just have them send a letter.
Yeah, that's fine, I think it's important, you know, that, you know.
Be very clear what, what we're trying to do, and that's if the board supports the vote.
That's correct, I'm going to, um.
Are you offering it as a motion, or do you want it, you want it offered as a courtesy to you? What do you want to do?
I would like a motion as a courtesy to the chair, if somebody's, or I vote, yes.
Just so I'm clear, the existing salary that it is today for HR, assessor, treasurer, economic development coordinator, building inspector, code enforcement officer, public works director, the general foreman, health director, council on aging coordinator, library director, and youth and rec director ought to receive a three percent increase as your recommendation with the appropriate fifty-two point three weeks needed to be budgeted.
The.
That's what I understand.
Could you read them back to me, please?
Sure. Director of HR.
No.
So her, her salary next year will remain the same.
She'll remain at the seventy-seven, two fifty.
Okay. So is it your, is it the column under the Board of Selectmen you would like Wendy to be driven by?
This is the column that I would like.
And let them send a letter, that way they, they can.
I'm asking, no, I want this, this, these figures should be forwarded to the FinCom.
That's what I was just, that's what.
Everything that's reflected here, you can send to the FinCom, and I will send a documentation. If this is adopted by the board, then I'll send it that you feel that there needs to be a slight adjustment because of a point three week. The HR director, that was the position that was appropriated at seventy-five thousand, and it was, her salary is seventy-seven, two fifty.
So she's to receive no increase next year?
No.
Okay.
Deputy assessor is an increase, it's just not as much of an increase, Wendy, as.
But his increase next year was only three percent for fifty-two point three weeks.
Uh-uh.
Yeah.
For the fifty, okay, so that would be, so then you would add in back in that nine sixteen, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
Are you saying that these smaller amounts that I have here, that would reflect the fifty-two?
Yes.
So that's easy enough to do.
For three days, it would.
So the assessor.
The assessor, you can put back the nine sixteen, sixteen.
The building inspector.
Yes.
That doesn't, no, I don't, I think, I don't think that does reflect it, because I'm looking at the deputy assessor, that's a three percent increase on eighty thousand. No, that's the point.
No, at fifty-two point three weeks is what they're claiming. See where I took out nine sixteen?
I understand, but if you're looking at the base.
It's three days of a week.
Of eighty, nine sixteen is the difference.
Correct.
If you go down here to the building inspector at sixty-five, it's only four ninety-seven.
Correct.
It's only half that when it's only fifteen thousand dollars off. They have to be recalculated.
Okay, that's fine.
So would the easiest thing to be, I'm just asking, that a motion be made as a courtesy to the chair, that, I mean, I want to be very clear of what you're asking me to vote on. So, and I want Wendy to be clear, because she's got to go forward with this to get it ready. So you are asking us to support three percent and only three percent based on fifty-two point three weeks?
Correct.
And if you could identify those budgets one more time for myself?
Absolutely.
And the ones that you feel.
Sure.
I'm assuming your column under Board of Selectmen is the column you are going by?
Correct.
Okay, and that way the three percent, I just want to think this through.
Right.
The three percent being calculated by Wendy would be accurate as put into the budget.
At the fifty-two point three weeks.
Right, okay.
That would be for.
So tell me again, please.
The deputy assessor.
Okay.
The building inspector.
Okay.
The health director.
Okay.
The council on aging coordinator.
Okay.
The library director.
Okay.
And the youth and recreation director.
So that will change your total budget, budget differentiation?
By minimum.
Okay, so.
Not, the ones that would not be included in this would be director of HR, treasurer collector, economic development coordinator, code enforcement, DPW public work supervisor, DPW general foreman, and I believe those are the only, the only positions that would not be included in the three percent.
And their numbers would stay as listed in your column?
They would stay, they would be level funded at the same salary that they received in FY fourteen.
And the only adjustment that would be needed on those is the additional three days. That would not account for the additional three days. My salary, I'll speak for myself, is eighty-two, two.
Right.
But because we have to budget an additional three days.
Sure.
The number in the budget needs to be an additional three days, not eighty-two, two.
If you want to put in the per diem rate that you're talking about, the three days of per diem rate, and send that to me?
Yep.
I have, I'm fine with that, okay? If you want to punch it in, that's fine, because there is still that little bit of wiggle room, Wendy, as you can see at the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
So that would be what I would recommend, and.
I will make that as a motion as a courtesy to the chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Wait before, it has not been seconded, I'll second it.
I know you want to second. I consulted with town council, as you know, I spoke on this twice, the first time when it came up, it was legal services, and clearly in the charter, we weren't able to have legal services in our budget, and then it changed to consultative services, and so I said, okay, well, maybe we can have consultative services in our budget, and so I voted in favor of it. And so I, I would just wanted to make sure, because I wanted to feel comfortable. So I spoke to town council, and who told me that it is the town manager who coordinates with consultant, with legal, with whomever, and we should not have this in our budget. Considering that, I feel very uncomfortable, and I applaud you, I think you've done a phenomenal job. I agree with a lot of the assumptions and things that you've done, but this evening I feel uncomfortable voting this in. I mean, we changed the title again, I don't know whether that would make a difference or not, but if he, if he's telling me that we should not have this in our budget, then I feel uncomfortable voting for it.
That is entirely up to you, Selectman Panetta, how you vote is your vote, and everybody would respect how we check our votes. I feel strongly, when we first brought this fifty thousand dollars up, we had a conversation about this, this was not brought up by this board. This board, when I went through the minutes of the meetings, previous meetings, it was the former chairman of the board who made the suggestion, and then a member who had since become a chairman also thought it was a great idea and said if the funds aren't expended, then that would be okay, but this would allow the Board of Selectmen to be able to better perform their job. That was the statement in there. So you had three seated members of the Board of Selectmen back in, I believe it was January of twenty twelve, the twenty-eleventh, this was reflected in the minutes. This was before you were on the board, I believe. But this was actually the, at the suggestion of the previous chair, who is now the current town manager, and I do agree with the idea, because quite frankly, Mrs. Panetta, as you know, we, trying to get some information has been very, very challenging over the last four months. It has been extremely challenging, frustrating, and in order to do the jobs that we were voted in to do, I feel that there may be opportunities that we would need to consult with outside professional services. And this is a discussion we can have with FinCom, it's a discussion we can have with the town meeting. I am keenly aware of what the town charter says as far as what the, the Board of Selectmen has the authority to spend, but I would hope, seriously, that we can work together on this. I really find it amazing that it's not being recommended, given, but to the fact that it was at the suggestion of the current town manager. So I'm hoping that he'll rethink his decision, support this request by the board, if this is what the board votes, and then work with us to be able to, if, if any of these monies need to be expended, then it needs, he has to sign the check, he needs to say, if it's anything over a thousand dollars, we all know that by the charter, but let's talk to FinCom, let's talk to town meeting, and let's explain some of the challenges. And I thought it was a great idea when I read it through the minutes, and I still think it's a great idea.
Well, I think we should be getting whatever information we need to get. I don't know what professional services is, I don't know what's included in professional services. I think that some of us have brought up some great ideas in terms of the ten thousand dollars for the opiate usage, we talked about parks and playgrounds, and I'd like to see more money put there. DPW, we talked about how severely unfunded it is. I feel like I'm taking money away from other potential departments who I needed, taking fifty thousand dollars away from other places. I mean, I, again, I, you're right, I still feel uncomfortable because of what I heard from town council, and so, and, and again, I applaud you, I, I think this is great, and I think a lot of the things that you say, I one hundred percent agree with, but.
The fifty thousand dollars that is being requested to be put into the Board of Selectmen budget is offset by two things. First of all, the legal on the labor relations, the reason that was dropped was because it was dropped, I requested that be dropped from seventy to twenty-five. That gives you forty-five thousand dollars. The town manager settled all of the labor contracts. Last week when we asked him why it still had to be at seventy thousand, the answer we received was grievances. Grievances are not going to cost seventy thousand dollars. I don't know if maybe he, answer me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, did you forget to leave something else in there? I'm not certain.
I would say that just to be, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars would be lucky to, twenty-five thousand dollars wouldn't cover. You think you have an understanding creates other things, but that's.
You think you have an understanding creates other things, but that's just a minor part of the day-to-day operations of issues that go on with employees and employment issues that arise and other things that go on, so I mean...
As I said, you know, this was an idea that I give you credit for. This was not a novel idea on my part, this was an idea that you presented to the board when you were seated on the board, and I completely agree with it. And at our last meeting, when you were talking about the various funds that you put in, you did articulate that you felt that members of the boards and commissions should be able to have counsel. So there are all different things that professional services can accomplish. Also the fact that this principal clerk's position is another savings of forty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. That position was never a thirty-hour position, that was many, many less hours than that. And coupled with benefits, I think the cost savings to the town would be very beneficial to helping, as we all say, try to move the town forward, put the monies into the budgets where they would serve the biggest benefit to the citizens of Swagis. So that's my statement on it.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, if I could just, following up on what Selectman Panetta said, professional services are throughout this entire budget. So I listened to the explanation of the Town Manager for what those various professional services are. We've changed the name at the recommendation of the Town Manager, he said legal services was not appropriate. We listened to him. My experience on the board, and I'm sure your experience, and my experience in the past, we've got some things that we will be dealing with, that we need to deal with. For instance, the Comcast contract. I'm told that we should begin within a year, year and a half prior to its expiration, of sitting with the experts to guide us on the next negotiation of that contract. You saw what we went through for four months on grease traps, having to ask and ask and ask, when we had someone right here who could have helped us. It's those type of issues where sometimes we need professional expertise outside the scope. And it should not take us four months to affect what it is we want to affect. It's unfortunate that Town Council, and this has been happening with some frequency, and it does concern me, is giving opinions, but we don't have the benefit, all of us don't have the benefit. We don't have the benefit of the question that was asked, and we all know, you get the answer based on the question you ask. For me, it's very simple, the manager has spoken about our recovery, our recovery is still ongoing financially after the Powers and Sullivan audit. In the interest of fairness and taxpayer money, three percent seems very fair, and I appreciate the hard work Wendy's now trying to do, to do that fifty-two point three days to get that where it be, where it needs to be. And I just think that there are issues within this community, such as, we talked about, the opioid epidemic, the parks and playgrounds that no one can use, because they're in such disrepair, the positions that need to be restored. I think this is very unusual for a Board of Selectmen, at least in my experience, not to just basically pass the budget along with no change in figures, I think a lot of hard work went into this. And for me, it was looking at credible information about the average annual percentage projections of raises, both private and public sector, both municipal and on all various levels. And from Forbes magazine, from the U.S. Department of Labor, it is anywhere between two point seven and two point nine. So rounding it up, it is three percent. And I just don't think that we can justify, I can't justify anything beyond three percent. I understand the need for parity, but it comes incrementally. People when they were hired knew what they were hired at, and so, you know, I think we just need to, for me, I'm looking at it in a much more global way, and I really do believe we need professional services, not just for this board, but for the boards that come after us. They need the ability to have outside, independent, unbiased guidance on issues, because the decisions we make affect the community now and in the future. I will use the example of the overlays, those are going to have far-reaching effects on the residents. And we need outside, independent information at times, I think we've clearly seen that.
Just to your point, Selectman Dever, I mean, when the Selectman had an issue with the sand, for example, we took a vote and we asked the Town Manager to go and hire an attorney to make sure, to find out what our rights were down over there on Route one oh seven. There have been many different instances over, at least since I've been a Selectman, where the Selectman has asked the Town Manager to look into things, which he has. You know, these, the few things that have been coming in as of late, later, like you've talked about the grease trap information, I'm not sure why we did not know that we had an expert, he was just recently hired, and maybe that was one of the reasons why.
He was hired in November, and he was hired based on his credentials.
But, but, the Town Manager is going to be paying for whatever the services that CDN may provide through the budget that we have within, within the engineer or DPW. It wouldn't be coming out of our budget, it would be coming from the other budget.
The thing that I, the thing that I also think about, Madam Chairman, is, and I truly speak about this board and boards to come in the future, one of the most important things that the Board of Selectmen does in the event that there is a change in administration is hiring a Town Manager. And they never seem to have the expertise of HR guidance, labor guidance. They are five people who generally don't have backgrounds in negotiations, sitting here trying to negotiate a contract, and Town Council assisting, maybe to form and content, but there's this element of conflict because he's hired by the Town Manager. So it's not just for this board, it's boards in the future to get independent, outside, unbiased, objective information when they need it. And so we have professional services all over this budget that we are going to vote for tonight, so we need to know what those are, and so this is how I envision the use. And yes, there was an attorney hired for the I ninety-five stamp, you know, but that level of cooperation isn't always there, and we have a lot of work to do. So that is why I'll be supporting it.
You want to move the question?
Call the question, yeah.
Further discussion, keep, well, that's not debatable. All those in favor, a moment, questions, say aye.
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 Okay. So the motion is to accept the recommendations as quoted in the handout, with the change of the three percent on fifty-two point three weeks, the elimination of the one position that, so that would affect that, and the other positions would, that were already articulated would remain at salary. Correct?
I believe so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
One, aye.
Okay. Motion passes, board one. Thank you very much, I hope you have a good evening. I would now ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the Town Manager's contract, not to return to open session.
So move, Madam Chairman, those members to be present, to be Chairman, Selectman Dever, Selectman Allen, Selectman Panetta, Selectman Castanetti, and Town Manager Crabtree.
There needs to be a role on this, to go into executive session? Mr. Castanetti?
Yes.
Let me...
It is nine forty-two.
Thank you, Wendy.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Panetta?
Yes.
Mrs. Saliella?
Yes.
Town Manager Crabtree? Did you go again, Mike?
What's that?
You guys stay here.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.